My left. Dave. Gary Israel, and I'll be acting chairperson this evening.
Peter Fox will be acting secretary.
Clint Tyner.
Dan Colson.
Okay, let's move on to item number three point one, the minutes from November nineteenth, twenty twenty four. So everybody had a chance to read those minutes? Any corrections, or do I have a motion to accept?
Mr. Chairperson, I Dan Colson move that we approve the minutes from the November nineteenth, twenty twenty four meeting.
Thank you. A second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Clint Tyner.
We've had a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose? Okay, let's go on to item number four point one, committee and staff report.
I have no items to share at this time.
Okay, how about our potential residential development report?
No items for that as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's go to agenda item. Oh, before we start the agenda items, let me read a piece of business. This is for our zoning public hearing. Meeting. Would like to welcome everyone and lay out a few ground rules which will apply to each public hearing held tonight. It is important that you present any facts or views you have as evidence so that an informed recommendation can be made by the planning commission to the governing body for their final decision. By statute, the governing body does not have to hold additional public hearings on these matters, although they may list, listen to whomever they wish. You will be asked if there is any new information which was not heard at these hearings. It is to everyone's advantage if we present all the necessary information at these hearings. For each case, after the city zoning administrator provides the commission with background information, I will call upon the applicant. Public comments will be heard following the applicant. Once have all been heard, the applicant will have an opportunity for final comments. The planning commission will close the hearing to public comments, and then will consider the fourteen factors on which to base their recommendation. During this time, the commission may direct questions to the applicant, the public, and/or city staff. You should be aware that the planning commission can recommend that the site be planted or replanted if necessary, and that a site plan be required for approval. You should be aware that any uses per district by the regulations can receive a zoning permit. If the applicant chooses to describe various features of their development plans, the city can only enforce those provisions which are covered in zoning and other city codes. Anyone wishing to speak must be recognized by the chairperson and give their name and address. Please use the podium and speak clearly so that your comments can be recorded for inclusion into our minutes. Official notification for these hearings were published on the city of Andover's municipal website on November twenty third, twenty twenty four, and notices were mailed to the applicant and all real property owners of record in the areas of notification on November twenty second, twenty twenty four. The record shows that at least twenty days have elapsed between the publication and the mailing dates and the hearing date. Unless there is evidence to the contrary from anyone present, I will declare that proper notification has been given. Although we do not encourage such communications, I will ask the commissioners if any of them have received any expertise written or verbal communications prior to these hearings which they would like to share.
None.
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 Okay, none. Thank you. Let's go on to agenda item five point one, which is the twenty twenty five planning commission meeting schedule. Anything from staff on that?
You will notice that this is exactly the same, third Tuesday of each month. Nothing had to be adjusted for a holiday. The deadlines are set up just as they were in twenty twenty four, generally around the previous meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Chairperson?
Yes.
I move that we approve the twenty twenty five planning commission board of zoning appeals meeting schedule as presented.
I second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Agenda item five point two, final plat, Southern Hills First Edition PDF. So I'll turn time over to city staff for that.
Thank you very much. Subject property in this case is generally located south, southeast of Southwest One Thirty Street and Southwest Butler Road. The proposed development would have fifty seven lots on an area of thirty six point four two acres of property. It is currently zoned SF two. It previously was being developed as a PUD which has since been abandoned, and the applicant is submitting for your consideration these fifty seven lots. Water service for the subject property is under jurisdiction of rural water district five, but a water service agreement was recently resolved, and that is why this case has sat to the side for some time, and that is now completed, so it's before you tonight. Super service for the subject property is currently served and will continue to be served by the city, and access for this plot from this plat comes from two points, one from Andover Road, and a second one from Southwest One Thirty Street. The preliminary, to kind of review the case history, the preliminary plat was recommended for approval by the subdivision committee in August of twenty two, conditioned upon the applicant addressing any of the comments which have since been resolved. And again, the reason for that large lapse in time was for that water service agreement. If you have any further questions, so be happy to stand and take them for you.
Okay, yes, I remember this being brought up in subdivision at the time. Is the applicant present? Okay. Didn't have on here. Do we need a motion to approve this then? Okay. Well. The final plat for. As presented to. The committee.
I'll second that. David Foley.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairperson, I move we recess the planning commission and convene board of zoning appeals.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's turn to. Agenda item five point four, a variance at three oh eight West.
Coob?
Coob Lane. Okay. I now call agenda item five point four, which is a public hearing on case number BCA dash V twenty four dash zero 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 seven. Before we begin, I'll ask members if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they are relative own property in the area of notification or have conflicts of interest.
None.
Okay, none. I now call on the city zoning administrator, David Westfall, to provide us with a report on this.
Subject property is generally located at three zero eight West Coob Lane, zoned SF two. The applicant in this case is looking for a variance of an eight foot tall fence along the back line of their property from the six foot maximum height, citing just additional concern for wanting privacy. You'll see in the report later some of the logic behind that, but staff does not particularly view this case as something that arises from a condition that's unique to the property in question. The applicant cites the adjacent property being a multifamily rented home is not something that we would typically weigh in consideration for variances, and further, the physical surroundings don't really create a situation in which the topography would impact and make a variance appropriate. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. I now call upon the applicant to make his or her presentation on the request and any response to the zoning administrators' report. If you would state your name and address, please.
My name's Tim Wagner, three oh eight Coob Lane. I'm the person that we're talking about right here. The biggest reason, I mean, we've been here since two thousand and five. The neighbors that were behind us have been there forever. They, they left. They are rental apartments. I've got grandkids. You've got guys that are sitting in the back in their, in their kitchen with no shirts on and things like that, and it's become kind of a nuisance as far as privacy with the wife and everything. So the November big winds blew a couple of my four by fours off, so we're going to get a new fence. So I figured what, what a time to see if I could get that eight foot variance on the backside just for a little more privacy. Talked to the neighbors to the left and to the right. They had no issues with it. They were actually kind of excited that it might happen because they were talking about trying to do the same thing because we had those rental properties. There's other, I mean, I didn't know if it's a zone thing. I've seen other properties in Andover that have the eight foot. I didn't know if they had to get the variances for that, or if that's just something commonplace. But when I asked about it, they said I had to get a variance. So this is the right thing to do, so that's why I'm here.
Okay. In here.
Thanks.
And going through the process. Let's see. Are there any members of the commission to speak on this case? Okay. Have there been any written communications?
No, there have not.
Okay. And do you have any further comments that you'd like to make, Mr. Wagner?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing no further public comments, I hereby close the public portion of the hearing. There will be no further public comments unless the board wishes to ask questions to clarify informations. The board will now deliberate the request to determine whether the evidence presents, presented supports conclusions of the required findings of facts. The board will now consider the criteria for evaluation.
Actually, I did have one question.
Yes, sir, if you wouldn't mind coming back up.
I'm sorry. Now my period of asking is difficult. Is there a reason why there's six foot versus eight foot? I mean, what's the logic behind that?
Les, could you address that for us?
Certainly. That six foot fence is the maximum that's allowed outright in the residential zones, six feet being the typical privacy fence you would see in the neighborhood. Eight foot fences are allowed in commercial districts or by variance in other residential zones.
Okay. Is there?
So would rental properties be considered a commercial?
Those rental properties are attached, single family residential.
Okay. Is there an HOA in your neighborhood that you?
No, sir. We're not in HOA. No.
I know that in the past we've looked at a couple of residents that were adjacent to school property where they requested a variance on an eight foot.
Sure, sure. You're probably talking about a couple of cases we had many years ago north of the Andover District Stadium.
Yep.
Those properties were able to, to show us that they had something that was unique about their property. In those cases, it was not just another residence across that fence. It was a district football stadium with noise and traffic and trash and all of the things that come with large groups of people.
Sure.
Well, has the city of Andover ever considered to do away with the six foot and just, I mean, allow people to do whatever? I mean, as long as you have a variance of eight to six feet, you're, I mean, I don't know what the, I'm not sure what two foot is bothering people over, especially when my neighbors are going to benefit from it as well as I am, and I'm the one paying for it.
Good point. Well, we'll deliberate the facts and findings.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Peter, if you wouldn't mind.
There are fourteen factors here, I believe. Nope.
Nine.
Nine. Sorry, nine factors. Does the evidence demonstrate that the physical surroundings, shape, or topography of the property would result in a practical difficulty as distinguished from a mere inconvenience if the owner, for the owner, lessy or occupant? Staff's response is the physical surroundings and topography do not impose any practical difficulty. Number two, granting the variance will result in material detriment or injury to other property or improvements in the neighborhood. Staff, no. Detriment and/or injury to other property or improvements is anticipated.
Peter, hold on for a second. We need to get some kind of comment from the Board of Zoning Appeals on number one. Do we concur with that statement from staff?
I concur. I concur with the first statement.
Okay.
Same.
Number two, so you've read that. No detriment and/or injuries to the property or improvements is anticipated. Comments from the Board of Zoning Appeals?
Concur.
Concur.
I concur.
Continue, Peter. Thank you.
Number three, granting the variance will result in an inadequate supply of light or air to adjacent properties substantially increase traffic congestion, increase fire risk, or substantially diminish property values in the neighborhood. Staff, no adverse effects are anticipated.
Concur.
Number four, the request for a variance is not based exclusively on the desire of the owner, lessy, occupant, or applicant to make money out of the property, make more money. Staff, the applicant does not have a motivation to make money out of the property through the request of this variance. It is to allow a higher fence along one of the property lines.
Concur.
Concur.
There are five conditions that have been reviewed that need to be met. Number one, the requested variance arises from a condition unique to the property in question, which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district, and which was not created by any action of the property owner or applicant. Staff, there is no evidence of a unique condition that led to the request of a variance. This is very common occurrence in single family homes to the adjacent to multifamily homes. Being adjacent to a property that is rented as opposed to one owned does not impact the case.
Can we pause on this one?
Yes, Dan.
This is the one, I think that if we concur here with the BCA, we're effectively already denying the application because they have to meet all five of these conditions. So I just wanted to kind of pause and foreground the importance of this one, make sure that we are concurring with staff. I noticed perhaps some hesitance on your part?
Well, I was just going to make a comment that my house has a five foot wrought iron fence in the backyard, and I have a rental property behind me. They look into my backyard, into my kitchen all the time. Sometimes it'd be nice to have a eight foot fence, but that's what my HOA is dictated, and it's within the six foot limit.
But that's your choice.
Well.
But that's your choice. You, you, you're in the HOA. I'm not. So I'm just, I mean, I'm just trying to apply common sense where there's other properties in Andover that have that eight foot fence.
Okay, Mr. Wagner, appreciate that, but public hearing has been closed.
Is it? Okay, I apologize.
Thank you.
So the question is, do we concur that this property is not, in fact, unique in this condition? And I, I for one concur with, with the staff's.
I do as well. I think it was adequate years ago, and because. It's moved in, it's now inadequate. That's the right reason to do.
Yeah.
What would be the right reason then?
Well, I don't think there is. I can see if it impeded the flow of air, if it caused a disruption in nature of some sort.
But a property owner free of any HOA constraints is not allowed to, to gain additional privacy in his own yard based on his wishes regardless of what the. Sorry, the.
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
David, can I ask then, do you, do you want to assert that there is a condition unique to this property that will meet the criteria for us to say yes to it?
We do have a strict, I guess, basis to. There are rules and guidelines, obviously, that we have to follow, but.
I mean, it, it is a rental property behind. Neighbors can change. An eight foot fence wouldn't necessarily change.
So on number three, do we concur?
I doesn't believe I've ever been on the board when we've had this situation. Is do we need to vote to decide whether we concur or?
I don't know. We haven't, I don't know that we've come up against one of these before. Any suggestion from staff? Okay.
So what number are we on then?
Number three.
Number one.
Number one.
Uh, number one?
Yeah.
Oh. Excuse me. Sorry about that.
I don't know. I've asked. Because concurring with number one.
Okay.
Effectively kills the application because we have to agree with all five.
That's correct.
So if we concur here, we are quashing the application. That's, I do, I, I vote to concur.
Okay, we'll take that vote. So Dan, you concur? Clint?
I concur with number one, as I stated before.
I concur with number one.
David?
Do not concur.
Okay, and I concur. So it's four to five, or four to one, excuse me. So this does bring up a unique situation. I've never handled one like this before.
So effectively, all of these, these five conditions have to be met, and you've, you've already demonstrated that one condition isn't met. So Dan's absolutely correct that without that, on all five conditions, a variance cannot be granted.
Okay. Do we need to continue on, or did we take a motion to?
Your, your motion.
We just do a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have a motion to reject the application?
Having considered the evidence at the hearing and determined that the findings of fact have not been found to exist that support all five conditions set out in subsection eleven dash one oh six dash B two of the zoning regulations and KSA twelve dash seven five nine E, I Dan Colson move that the chairperson be authorized to sign a resolution for not granting the variance for case number BCA V two four dash zero 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 seven.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Okay.
David Foley.
We have four to one.
But with respect, I accept the decision, but I will say, you, you admitted that there, that you've never seen this before, and since the tornado came through here, there are fences in this town that are eight foot. That's the only reason that I came here with that because I had seen other properties, and when I was told why I needed to get a variance, that's what I did. So I was trying to do the right thing. Now, I could probably have done the wrong thing and got laid with it because everybody else is. So I respect your decision because you're the board, you're the council, but you're wrong.
Okay, Mr. Wagner, hold on for just a minute. So staff, what resolution does or does Mr. Wagner, can he make an appeal to city council, to somebody else other than this board?
The appeal for actions of the board of zoning appeals is to the district court.
Okay. So, Mr. Wagner, I would imagine if you were to go to district court, you would have to have evidence of places. Okay, thank you for coming, Mr. Wagner. Appreciate it. Okay, a resi, uh, let's see. Do I read the last part, the closing? Okay, thank you. Okay. Well, it's interesting being on the board of zoning appeals. You always get different things, and this is one that's, I've never come across before. Okay, let's move on to item number five point three. Let's see. I now call agenda item five point three, which is a public hearing on case number BCA dash V twenty four dash zero 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 six. Before we proceed with the hearing, I will ask the commission members if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they are relative own property in the area of notification or have conflicts of interest.
None.
None.
Okay. I now call on the city zoning administrator, David Westfall, to provide us with a report on this case.
Thank you very much. The applicant in this case is seeking a variance of one thousand two hundred and seventy five feet from the five hundred square foot maximum floor area for an accessory structure, as well as a variance of one thousand five hundred and eighty five square feet from the one thousand square foot total maximum size of all accessory structures that are permitted. In this case, the existing principal structure, an existing detached garage, and the proposed accessory structure would comply with the total maximum lot coverage is one of the key factors to consider here. Thirty percent is allowed in this zoning district. With this proposed addition, the property would be at about nine point seven percent lot coverage. Additionally, the structures, all of the structures both proposed and existing fall within the required setbacks for, for this zoning district. Additionally, the subject property is one point three eight, one point three seven acres in size and is located in a neighborhood where accessory structures such as this are pretty commonplace. For these reasons, staff does not oppose granting the request for the variance pending the outcome of your hearing.
Okay, thank you very much. I now call upon the applicant to make his or her presentation on the request and any response to the zoning administrators' report. If you would state your name and address, please.
Sure. Brett Watson, three twelve East Cedar Ridge Court. Okay. I think you heard most of what I was going to say. The lot coverage is sub ten percent, and this is a very common occurrence in our neighborhood. There are five of these variants that, variances that have been approved since the COVID period, a few of which have structures that are more than, than two thousand square feet, and that includes our neighbors directly. Um, and that includes our neighbors directly across the street from us. Despite our best efforts, uh, you, you will hear from a neighbor of ours tonight that is not comfortable with the, the plans, uh, as they've currently been proposed. Um, we, we've worked very hard to, to satiate their concerns, uh, but unfortunately have been unable to do so. I guess the last point I would make, there, there was a written document that was sent that talked about drainage issues. And what I would say is, we, we also share some drainage issues on our property, but they're on the east side of our property. The neighbor contesting this is on the, the west side of our property and in conjunction with this uh, process, we did get a survey uh, completed and we have this here uh, to, to corroborate that statement, uh, if you're interested in seeing it. Thank you.
Yeah, if you don't mind coming back up, Mr. Watson.
I, I would assume that all this has been, there's an architectural board there at the HOA.
So our, our, our builder, uh, is, is here with us today and he has had preliminary conversations. We didn't want to go any further um, until we actually had the city council's approval.
So what, what is there, uh? I mean, obviously, they're probably in favor of it, or?
Yeah, generally, what we've been told is, um, so long as it doesn't obstruct a vision or it's not, um, it's not prominent, uh, prominently located such that it would be visible from the golf course. Tom has quite an issue with that.
Pretty sure you're clear of that.
Um, and, and you're, uh, you adhere to all of the, the zoning regulations of the city of Andover. It tends to be approved.
Which, which we are, which it is?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Not at this moment. Thank you. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on this case? If you would please state your name and address, please.
Sure. My name is Chris Sands and we're at two two four East Cedar Ridge Court, just to the west of the said property. If you'll pull up the plat, it's probably the easiest way to, to look at what our concerns and issues are. I did submit. By the way, this is the first time we've seen the actual plans, the pool, uh, where it's gonna be and all that. We had an indication that they wanted to build a pool house and a pool. And we've had discussions. I'm very good friends with their family. We've always been very congenial. They were very good about being communicative with us. Um, it did break down. Um, evidently we got a email Sunday, cause we had sent them an email and I, I had it in the packet, that we agreed to the variance of the size. However, we requested it go against the tree line on the east side. There's a hundred feet of trees between them and the neighbors on the east side. And they're choosing a location that's fifteen feet from our primary bedroom. So it's a, a, an extreme hardship. My husband and I have not slept for two weeks. It would cause a, uh, a- again, it's right up against the property line. As you saw, this is not a pool house. This is a home. There's uh, windows that would overlook our yard. It would depreciate our house. Um, we built this house twenty years ago. It's a custom home. We chose to build in the estate section, which is different than the patio homes. In the patio homes, you can expect a home to be, you know, a two thousand square foot home to be fifteen feet, but not in this area. It just squeezes it in. There are, as he mentioned, um, there is a house across the street that did put a garage in, but it's up again, it's not up against, it's all the way to the end of the lot line, plus it's on the neighbor's garage site, not on their primary bedroom side. This is right at our bedroom. That's the pictures that I submitted so that you could see literally. And we just found out tonight that there's gonna be a spa. We'll, we'll looking right into the spa. As they, the plans, which we saw tonight, um, the variance on that garage, there's a thousand square foot garage. We did not get notified when that was built. It was built about ten years ago. They did not build it. It was the previous owners that built it. When they built it, they did not correct the drainage. And so we have not been able to put trees or any kind of vegetation to separate our lots because it sits in water. So the only thing that you'll see is uh, volunteer willows. We had tree top come out twice because there are um, swing sets and playhouses and things that we wanted to. We'd never said anything to them negatively. We just wanted to protect our view and, and they tried twice and they just die because they sit in water. So they did um, accommodate and say, yes, we have that same problem. Evidently, the builder, when they built the garage, didn't consider drainage. And I also, about five years ago, we submitted to Butler County when we had to protest taxes. Um, and they came out and saw how the drainage is all ruined on that side of our house. So this is stacked. So now you've got a thousand square foot garage and they're suggesting to build a two thousand square foot home right thirty feet next to its line up. So the whole wall, which again, we don't get fences in Flint Hills, we, uh, the maximum that we can do is a six-foot wrought iron fence. So that the idea was to keep it so that it would be wide open and you'd have views. That's why I suggested and showed you the view from our deck. It's just, uh, we have deer that live in our backyard. My husband has finch feeders. We're bird lovers. Um, and this would totally um, present a hardship on us, especially there's windows, as I see, that would literally look right down in our yard, um, based on the current plan. So we said, and we wanted to be fair, that we would agree to the variance, the size, because we knew they really wanted it and we want to be good neighbors. But we asked that it be on the east side. And there, I, I don't know why that can't be accommodated. So that's where we're at with that.
Can I stop you right there and ask you a question?
Absolutely.
So you're saying that, uh, about ten years ago, the detached garage on Mr. Watson's property was built by the previous owner?
Correct.
Does staff have any recollection of that being done?
It was built by Mr. Huffman, the builder.
Sure, I can answer that really quickly. At that time, the zoning regulations didn't put a maximum size on a detached garage. Since twenty eighteen, when we adopted the UDM, we included the size of a garage in that maximum for an accessory structure.
Okay. And that existing garage does meet the criteria of being in the, in the proper setback from the property line?
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. Now, I'll ask city staff another question.
Sure.
I know in my development, there's been a drainage issue. And this was brought up before in one of the planning commission, I believe, meetings. That when a UDM is done, the drainage is all correct. And then after the builder gets in there and starts messing with elevating houses and stuff, the city no longer has any control over drainage. Is that correct?
There is a master drainage plan for all of the modern subdivisions. That essentially establishes floor grades for garages, for the throughout basements and the yard. It doesn't necessarily it doesn't necessarily get specific as to the house that is left to the builder and the builder's engineer at the time that house is applied for.
Okay, and that would apply also to the, the detached garage? Okay.
We, we see many, many times that those drainage plans have been fouled by this or that, whether it was regrading the rear yard drainagement or regrading the yard such that it didn't drain as it was engineered to do. But I will also say, this is Butler County. It's very clay soils. There is no percolation, so the majority of the rain runoff has to run away on the surface. If there is any imperfection in that surface, it will pond for a time.
Okay. And this, this did happen with the previous owner, not with Mr. Watson. So when he bought the property, he may not have been aware of the drainage issue, may not have been brought up.
Well, in fact, when we met with them, we had shared with them, we could, we haven't been able to, uh, put trees in because of the drainage problems. That's when we found out they had problems too. So. There's another thing to consider, and I don't know where the covenants of the, of Flint Hills, but in the estate section where we live, um, twenty-five percent of the land has to be in native grasses. So it's, when you look in and when you consider overall areas, that's also part of it to keep the area, and that's why they did all these tree lines. And that's why we're suggesting, because these willows that are volunteer are all dying. So they've been, they've said that they would put a twelve-foot tree behind their, um, home. But the problem is, is there's no guarantee that those are gonna live. We've tried it and they don't live because of the drainage problem. So that is a great thing if landscaping could do it, but we're not sure of that. And so we're put it along the tree line. That's, there's a hundred feet between them and the other home. Plus, it would be far enough down, it wouldn't be at their primary bedroom window, this new home. But anyway, um, just a couple of things to consider. So, um, it also, the, um, again, Flint Hills association says that you can't have a pool house over one story in the covenants. This is more than one story and there would be windows, again, right into our backyard. And, and my biggest concern is the hardship and, and you know, if we could, we'd probably sell, but we can't now. We're, and while this construction's going on. Anyway, um, so we sent them a note. We felt pretty good about it. Again, we haven't slept. This is killing us. We love our home. We don't want to have to move. But, um, this is the first time tonight we've seen it. They said they didn't know, but when we saw the pool structure, that's like, oh, that's huge. So not only are you talking a building or home to put on the side, that, uh, concrete and all the, um, pool decking, uh, whatever, that's really large. And again, all we're asking is that they just get putting it on the other side. They've, they've said they want to do a baseball field on the other side. I think that causes us hardship. I'm not sure. I don't mind the baseball field on my side. Anyway, uh, we we're not sure as well, because again, there is, I'm not, I, I don't have a tape measure, but there is at least a thousand square foot garage, another two thousand square feet. Then you put this huge pool. This house is a four, a four thousand, forty-four hundred square foot house. So they're almost doubling in size and it's not like, a- again, there's grasses, there's other things to consider. And there are a couple other homes that have done accessory buildings, but they're all, they've all put them up against a neighbor's garage, not on the bedroom side. So, um, again, um, and I have talked, because Flint Hills, um, does have a lot of covenants. Um, and there are a lot. Again, we just saw these plans, so we're at a deficit. We're just sitting here going, we knew it was gonna be a home. We knew they wanted to put it on our side. They never responded to our email that we sent them last Sunday to say, we'll agree to the variance as long as you put it on the east side. We just heard back from them Sunday and they just, um, they didn't really say, well, we're not going to even consider the other side. Again, we don't know why they won't. That's the question. Um, I think that's it. Was there anything else today?
I'm Gordon, the other half.
He's the husband. He's allowing me to talk tonight.
So I think they've also offered, uh, which is great, to plant trees, as we've heard. The problem is planting a tree high enough, because we sit up high enough. When we sit on our deck or our bedroom window, we're literally looking in. So a twelve-foot, see fourteen, it's, it's gonna have to grow. And I'm afraid selfishly, I'm growing faster than the tree grow. Or maybe it's aging faster. So by the time that tree, those trees get to the size that they would really prove, I, I'm afraid that's too many years. So.
We want them to have what they want. We're just asking them to put it on the side where it wouldn't impact or be a hardship to us.
Okay.
It's as simple as that.
Okay, uh, can I have the applicant come back up to the podium, please? I got a couple of questions. Thank you. I appreciate you coming back up.
No, of course.
This appears to be more of an HOA issue or a Flint Hills issue than it does a planning commission. Based on the information that we have, that we meet all the criteria of setbacks, coverage, uh, the size of the property, or the size of the property and the size of the building and everything, we're all within the boundaries of what have been established by the city. I think it's a, it's an issue that, and this is my personal opinion, that needs to be resolved between you and your neighbor with your HOA. They're saying that a pool house can't be more than one story. And it looks like you're, and she, she keeps calling it a house. Are you gonna have somebody living in that pool house?
No, no.
Okay.
It's gonna be a workout facility and an office. And if I could, it's, it is, it is one story. It has a pitched roof because specifically within the HOA, they would like you to build, uh, your, your secondary, uh, fixture, um, in a, in a manner that's very consistent with your primary home. And so it's, it's, it's designed specifically to do that.
Yeah, yeah, I, I know in Flint Hills, they don't want you putting up a metal building. No, you know, they want you to have the same architectural style as your home. So, um, and I would just ask you, and I'm not saying anything. It's just, she has asked if you could flop it to the other side and put it against. And all I, all I could say is, if it were me, I want to look out at my pool. If I flop it, is that gonna make a difference to where the pool house is? Is it affect? And that's just my comment.
I, I think we were naive enough moving into this process that we thought that we'd be solving, you know, killing two birds with a singular stone, if you will. And that is the area where there's not a lot of privacy. And candidly, I mean, we have kids that are ages twelve to three. Um, I'm sure we're less than, you know, an ideal neighbor uh, from, from that perspective. And so the thought was, we could build in, uh, complete privacy on that side because of the issues that they've referenced with our, um, trampoline and, and, yeah, they can't sit on the deck because it's, it's too loud. And I, this is not, this is not a forum for squabbling neighbors, um, clearly. I, I would say that, um, the veracity of the statements that were, were just made, um, previously, I, I would, uh, certainly contest. And, um, I'm happy to do that if that's gonna make a difference. Yeah, we're, we're certainly not building a baseball field, um, on our, you know, one point three seven acre lot. I can, I can promise you. The reason why the west is so, is so important, that is, there's privacy. We'd like to create some shade in, in the backyard and also all of that drainage. And also, all of that drainage, it all flows to the east. And if I could point out one thing in the, these pictures that they, that they provided, I think this would be of use.
The pictures are in your packet, they're not in this presentation, but you can refer to them there.
So, it'd be on the pa, I guess it's the second page of, of pictures where it states the view from the deck. So, we've already established that our drainage issues are on the east side of our property, not on the west side. So, if you see the view from the deck, those are two rather large coniferous trees that sit directly below that detached garage. Um, the detached garage sits 15 feet from, from the property line. Um, and then if you look at the, the second picture on the bottom left, which is of, of their home and the detached garage, their home is on the right, you can see that retaining wall. And I don't know, I'm far from being, uh, an export or an expert or an authority on water drainage issues, but, um, surmise that that, that perhaps could be the issue. And then maybe the last thing I would say, we, we have, um, you know, we, we've moved the property. I think the setbacks have to be 10 feet from the property line. We've, we've moved that significantly in. Uh, we've also agreed to, um, look into perhaps putting a berm there and putting trees, uh, across the totality of the line, uh, all of which we would do on our dime, um, which would be tens of thousands of dollars. And, uh, you know, it just doesn't seem to be. I think if we had to, um, it's just, we, we haven't been able to say sheath our concerns is the best way to say it.
Okay. Of course, will you be removing trees then to do this?
Pardon?
Were you removing some trees to do this, uh, structure?
Uh, there are some volunteer trees that we will be, uh, removing, but quite a few trees over there already. I think it's a question of whether or not they survive when you, when you put in the structure with the root system. Just why we had sort of the, the backup plan to, to berm and perhaps plant new ones.
And are you looking at putting a wall between the pool house and the existing garage?
Oh, a wall?
Yeah.
Uh, that's where we were gonna try to put trees. I, Claire, you can certainly opine.
There's like the, will be, um, like in order to get the pool equipment and stuff in, there will be, uh, the edge of the, the property or of the structure. We'll come up against that. It's all, it's on the plans and everything, but, um.
Yeah. Correct, correct. That's exactly what it would be.
Okay. So, right now, you're proposing 15 point, 15 feet, three inches setback from the property line. But you just, did I hear you correctly that you're willing to move that?
Well, I think that, that was the, the move. Like, it's a greater than 50% move of further than what's required.
Okay. Yeah. Okay. Um, I appreciate you coming back up to the podium.
Thank you.
Uh, have we received any written communications?
None, besides the one that is in your packet.
Okay. Um, are there any final comments? Yes, Mrs.?
Just another question. It looked like you also have a garage in this new pool home. Is that correct? So, what is, is that? Storage area? Again, we've just seen it for the first time, so.
Yeah.
Actually, I believe the, the first day that, um, they were invited over to our home to look, this was November 22nd.
And I, I showed you plans at the time, Gordon.
But you told me not to look at them. You didn't have a pool plan. You said, we're working on that. And you said, don't even look at these. And I said, there is a window that looks onto our yard. And you go, oh, disregard that, we can take that out. You did say that.
Suffice it to say, there's a full email cor, a, a full email correspondence, but we don't need to.
Yeah, yeah. You, you're, the garage door there that's shown on your right elevation, that would be forgetting like a lawnmower or something in and out? Okay, so it's not a garage for vehicles?
So, I'm certain that this is a problem, but there's two guys.
Well, and the other thing you told said, this isn't a pool house covenants when they come to town. So, we want it to be dad can stay in when they come. You, that, she's, what she said.
Time out, time out.
Yeah.
This is exceeding the limits of us.
This isn't a forum for
I, I know what the answer to this is. If there's a problem, Tom will tell you there is. And I think you know what I'm talking about, so we need to do our jobs.
Yeah. Yeah, this isn't a forum for, they said, we said, this was in an email or that. We're gonna base this on the facts that we have presented to us this evening. We do appreciate your comments. I understand, you know, buying out in Flint Hills is an expensive endeavor. Um, you know, we can't always control what's, what's happening. I've, I purchased a house once and the next thing I knew, and I had a view of the golf course, there was a basketball court in, in my view. So, anyway. Uh, let, let's close the public hearing. And the pu, and the, the board will now deliberate the request to determine whether the evidence presented supports the conclusions of the required findings of facts. The board will now consider the criteria provided for evaluation. And
I can do it.
Thank you.
Are we supposed to make a motion?
Dave, you gonna read the?
Yeah, is it nine of them again?
Yes.
Okay. Nine factors. Uh, does the evidence demonstrate that the physical surrounding shape or topography of the property would result in a practical difficulty as distinguished from mere inconvenience for the owner, less see or occupant? Staff states the property is over three times the minimum lot area required for the underlying zoning district.
Concur.
Concur. Granting the variance will result in material detriment or injury to other property or improvements in the neighborhood. Staff states no detriment and or injury to other property or improvements is anticipated.
I mean, this is this might be the question.
Yeah, that's a hard one. Uh, you talked about depreciation in your property. Do you have any proof? You know, and that's, that's not something that we can deliberate here. So, I concur.
I concur.
Peter, you have?
Is the HOA complicit with this? Then I concur.
Do you have an, like an email stating that? Who did you speak with? Kirk?
Okay.
I concur.
Concur.
Yeah.
Concur.
Okay.
Where was that, number three?
Number three.
Okay, number three. Granting the variance will result in an inadequate supply of light or air to adjacent property, substantially increased traffic congestion, increased fire risk, or substantially diminished property values in the neighborhood. Staff states no adverse effects are anticipated. Concur.
Concur.
Number four, the request for variance is not based exclusively on a desire of the owner, less see, occupant, or applicant to make more money out of the property. Staff states the applicant does not have a motivation to make money out of the property, though the request of this variance or through the request of this variance, it is, uh, it is to allow structures to be used as a pool house.
Concur.
Concur. Specific conditions to be met. The requested variance arises from a condition unique to the property in question, which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district and which was not created by any action of the property owner or the applicant. Staff states the subject property is generally larger than other comparable single-family one housing sites. Comparing it to smaller lot that might comply with 500 square foot maximum or accessory structures, it would have a comparable impact on the maximum lot coverage as what is being requested.
Concur.
Concur. I would concur.
Strict application of the provisions of these zoning regulations would result in unnecessary hardship for the owner, less see or occupant of the land or structures. Staff states strict application of the provisions in this case would result in some unnecessary hardship for the owner, given the size of the lot and what is being requested. Concur.
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 Three. Granting the variance will not adversely affect rights of adjacent property owners or residents. Staff states no adverse effects are anticipated. Concur. Uh, number four, the requested variance will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare. Staff states no adverse effects are anticipated. Concur. Number five, the requested variance will not be opposed to the general spirit and intent of these zoning regulations. Staff states because the requested variance would still allow the subject property to comply with the maximum lot covers specified for this zoning district in the bulk regulations, it, it is not in opposition to the general spirit and intent of the zoning regulations. Concur.
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to either approve, modify and approve, disapprove, or table the discussion? And before that, I have a question for staff. That's okay. If we make a motion to approve this, can we put on there that there a condition be met that the applicant has to get final approval from the Flint Hills HOA?
That's really between them and their HOA.
Okay, that's why I asked. Okay. Is there a motion? Or?
Um, I can make that motion.
Okay, thank you.
Having considered the evidence at the hearing and determined that the findings of fact have been found to exist that support all five conditions set out in subsection 11 dash 106 dot B2 of the zoning regulations and KSA 12, 759. I, Peter Fox, uh, move that the chairperson be authorized to sign a resolution granting the variance for case number BZA dash V24 dash 006 as requested.
I'll second that motion. There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. A res, a resolution will be prepared and made available to the applicant as soon as reasonably possible, but no later than 45 days from the date of this hearing. If anyone is aggreviate, aggreviate other appeal can be made to the district court. Reasonable, reasonable li, that's a hard one for me. Within 30 days after the resolution is signed and filed with the zoning administrator. We appreciate everyone being here this evening. Know this is a difficult situation. Let's move on to item 5.5. I now call agenda item 5.5, which is a public hearing on case number BZA dash CU24 dash 0003. Before we proceed with the hearing, I'll ask the commission members if any of them intend to disqualify themselves from participating in this case because they are a relative own property in the area of notification or have conflicts of interest.
None.
None.
Okay. I now call on the city zoning administrator, Dave, to provide us with a report on this case.
This is located at 418 North End of Red Greens on the corner of Central and Andover. It's approximately 1.1 acres in size. And it would be one of the two tenants in this building. Uh, currently, it is unoccupied. Uh, it's zoned as B3 retail and service business district. Uh, for you tonight to consider would be for an, uh, outdoor patio area. While the restaurant is outright permitted in this zoning district, uh, it requires a conditional use, uh, to grant that, uh, patio in, in addition. Uh, just also for your consideration, when you're delivering this, the applicant is also seeking to arrange for off-site parking with the greens, so they can meet the minimum parking, off-street parking requirements. materials and have no objection to the conditional use request.
Okay.
If I may add real quick, the off-site parking would be a separate conditional use that will happen when they figure it out. So, you're not approving that tonight, it's just the outdoor seating here.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I'll now call upon the applicant to make her presentation on the request and any response to the zoning administrators' report. Is here. Table. Was that a motion, Dave?
Yes. I think a motion to table it.
Okay, we have a motion to table the item. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? One name. Present. Yes?
I was to speak to the item. My name is Bob Kaplan. I own the Andover Square Shopping Center. May I make a record of what I'm gonna say in the event I can't make the deferral date?
Sure, sure. Can we make a microphone available to Mr. Kaplan?
Test, test.
Thank you. Mr. Kaplan, if you'd state your name and your address, please.
I prefer to go to the podium if I can get up.
Get him, Bob.
Thank you.
And those who don't know, Mr. Kaplan's been a
That's one less alley.
Yeah, he's a permanent fixture of the city of Andover.
The owner of the community. Just getting too old.
Yeah, you're never too old.
I was at the, uh, Wichita Planning Commission the other day. And they said, you, Mr. Kaplan, you have 10 minutes for rebuttal. I said, 10 minutes? Take me 10 minutes to get to the podium.
Well, thank you.
Bob Kaplan. Bob Kaplan is my name. My address is 150 North County Line Road. I'm the co-owner of the Andover Square Shopping Mall. That's directly across the street from the applicant's facility. That's the subject of the hearing that's been deferred. I do not oppose the conditional use. I'm not in opposition to it. What I wish to do, Chair and Commissioners, make a record of what I have been told and the request that has been made of it, so it'll be in the record at the deferral hearing. I have been told and I have been asked to permit the parking for the applicant on the Andover Square parking lot on my property across the street, across Andover Road from the facility. And I was told, having verified it one way or another, but I was advised that if I consented to allow my parking lot to be used for off-site parking, because they do not have adequate parking for the number of occupants that they wish, that the city would permit it. I find it hard to believe because it violates the parking code, which is one space for every two and a half occupants. But that's But that's what I was told of simply repeating what I was advised. And I was asked to give my consent to provide the parking for their excess parking. I am not willing to provide parking on the Andover Square property as I do not have any spare spaces. I need every parking stall I have. As some of you may know, the Rio Bar and Grill is a very, very busy restaurant, as is Spalding Food and Drink. Between the two, between the Rio Mexican Restaurant and Spalding, they need 108 spaces to meet code. Just those two facilities alone. And I've got a number of other tenants. I have buses to park on my lot taking up eight or nine stalls. The buses come in, they bring kids in for events with the Andover schools, athletic events and whatever. They can't park at McDonald's because McDonald's never ever provide stalls for anybody but sedans and, and pickup trucks. If you look at a McDonald's about any place in the country, there's no parking for big trucks or equipment or anything else. Who gets it? I get it. I'm right south of the McDonald's. I, it used to be mine. I sold it to McDonald's and now they just, they park on my lot to go in there. In addition to the buses, I get big trucks. I've had semi-trailers in there. I lose a lot of parking spaces to people who cannot get into the McDonald's and that detracts from what I need. A couple of weeks ago, and you'll find this hard to accept, a couple of weeks ago, I was over there and I found a, there was a city of Andover maintenance truck parked in my driveway, in my driveway from central, right next to a tow zone sign. And I suppose, I suppose, I didn't, I didn't do anything about it. I suppose that's because it's the only place he could find to park to go into McDonald's. Another, another problem that I want to make a record of, I do not like, even if I permitted it, even if I permitted it, allowed it, people are going to jaywalk. My lot, street from the facility, they're not going to go to the corner, wait a night, cross the street and then walk back to the facility. They're going to jaywalk and they're going to have, they're going to have been drinking. And inevitably, somebody that's had too much to drink and jaywalks across a very, very busy arterial is inevitably going to get hit and get hurt. I want no part of that. I can sign the lot with a portable sign of my own. I can challenge illegal parking and tow cars. I would rather not. I guess the applicant could make a deal with the Sherman Williams Paint Store next door, pick up a few stalls that way. But if what I'm told is correct, that the applicant wants to seat 130 people, he's never going to have a parking for it, not according to code, might be able to get it on a conditional use, but so far I've not seen that. I'm going to have to have some type of security on my customers. I've already extended. I have very, very interesting facility that I'm ready to open. It's a NASA familioration facility and it's for youngsters to familiarize themselves with the opportunities at NASA, not just astronauts. There are tens of thousands of jobs and I've spent a lot of money on it and I have a lot of hardware, including a flight simulator that the kids could fly. A 10 or 11-year-old kid, I've disguised it as a spaceship and a 10 or 11-year-old kid is going to be thrilled to get in it and take off and fly into space and land it again. I'm still looking for a Mars rover. I've got an operator and we've set up a 501 C3. Ronnie Price is my vice president. So that's about all I've got to say. I'll take any questions, but if I'm not here, I'd like to have my comments read, not in opposition to the CU. I don't care. They can, they can have all the restaurants and clubs they want. It doesn't bother me, but I don't want the applicant's occupants, I don't want their customers taking up stalls that I'm already short on. I just barely got enough parking my own. I only got 181 spaces and it's tight. I meet code, but it's tight. And between McDonald's and all the other people that park there that are not customers, it creates a lot of, creates a lot of headaches for me.
Well, thank you, Mr.
I, I thank you for your attention and I'll answer any questions.
Staff, can we have a condensed version of that with his approval of the variance, but his objection to?
When they evaluate that case, when they make that conditional use request, that can certainly be something we factor into our summary, our case summary and just to.
Print it up for us or in our minutes?
Yeah, I can just include these minutes in the agenda that has a section discussing that.
Thank you. So that will be in our minutes when we look at this case again, Mr. Kaplan.
All right, Mr. Sherman. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Permitting me to make my presentation.
Thank you. Should we adjourn the Board of Zoning Appeals and reconvene the Planning Commission or?
I'll just make this real short.
Okay. Go, go ahead.
My name is Richard Wheeler and I live at 213 East Central. My property is behind where they're going to have this patio and I have a problem with the privacy fence that's around the property.
Okay.
The owner of the property, four years ago or so, I made a complaint with the city and they were supposed to take care of it, which, um, they, the landowner's got more pull than the city had, I guess, but he wouldn't fix his fence. Privacy fence has fallen over.
Okay.
Boards are falling off of it and it goes all the way around Sherman Williams. On the Sherman Williams side, there's a hole about eight foot wide through the fence that goes into Ms. Helena's property. And I take care of Mrs. Helena's property. I mow her yards and stuff for her because she's blind and can't see and I have to pick up spare boards and throw them back out of her yard. I just want, there's going to be, I know, more noise. I don't have any problem with the restaurant or nothing like that, but can they update this fence to keep the traffic and the trash and everything? He, he fixed the fence, come over on my property, propped over with two before, it's propped over into my property. I had to mow around his props.
Okay.
That was his way of fixing the fence and this has been going on for four or five years.
Okay.
But I think it's, now is the time with this new ownership to get the fence fixed. If it was on my property, I'm sure he would complain about it and I would have to fix it.
Sure. Compliance officer would.
Yeah. Can we have the compliance officer take a check, review that? Well, okay. Okay.
Frequent fire.
Okay, thank you very much for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, Mr. Wheeler.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to adjourn the Board of Zoning Appeals and reconvene the Planning Commission.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any member items? Anything the staff needs to. Okay. I noticed that there's one string, it's like a one section.
Compliance officer.
Yeah. Get the compliance officer out there on the right of the city.
Would you, Jerry?
We have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
We have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And no opposed. Meeting adjourned. This was. Thank you, Ms. Secretary. Merry Christmas, everybody.
I sent a text message to Dana the other day. I had to get this little job of tiling the bathroom.